Okay, okay, let me check, let me check my major schedule.
Don't make me look bad, don't show up. No, the big thing from us promoting somebody to police sergeant is, is, no, uh, no, the big thing is Dixie Highway improvements, yeah, by the.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of March 12th. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call Mrs. Thomas.
Trustee Willis.
Here.
Trustee Colton.
Here.
Trustee Hyferman.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Roman. Trustee Open. President Hofeld.
Here. Representing staff this evening, to my left, our village manager Napoleon Haney, to my right, our village attorney Chris Cummings. To the audience's right, our police chief Denise McGrath, community and economic development director Angela Maseris, and public works director John Schaefer. The minutes of February 27th, any additions or corrections, trustee Willis?
No.
Trustee Colton?
I was not here.
Trustee Hyferman?
Hyferman.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Nothing for me.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Willis, seconded by trustee Harris Jones, roll call, please.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Colton?
Abstain.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
The minutes are approved, the claims list in the amount of nine hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and thirteen cents. Again, comments or questions, trustee Willis?
Answered, all questions, please.
Trustee Colton?
All good.
Trustee Hyferman?
I have no questions.
Trustee Harris Jones?
All claims have been answered.
May I have a motion to approve the claims list, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Willis, roll call, please.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
President Hofeld.
Aye. Of that nine hundred and twelve thousand dollar claims list, three items comprise the majority of that list. Our payment to the city of Chicago Heights for water was three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. One month's employees' health insurance, two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And our payment at Thorn Creek Sanitary District was eighty-nine thousand dollars. That amounted to six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, or seventy-three percent of that claims list. Hear from the audience, if anyone would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. If not, meet your merchants, Mrs. Maseris.
Good evening, we have merchants in Lulubell. Lulubell is a boutique in downtown Homewood on twenty-fourty-nine Ridge Road. And here to represent Lulubell is one of the owners, Dodi Lyons. Hi, good evening, I'll be quick because I know there's stuff on, I think I know. I'm Dodi Lyons, I am half of the ownership of Lulubell, my business partner Lisa Carmel, he is at a Plusmore Library Board meeting, so she says hello. Our store has been here for eight years, we just celebrated our eight year anniversary. And if you don't know where we are, we're right on Ridge, right next to Stony Point Grill, the new, the new restaurant that's opening. We have the coolest stuff in there, we have a lot of local, we, we really sell a lot of local artisan made things. We have jewelry, if you need gifts, I know a lot of people that I see faces that have shopped in my store many times, so hi. So, but we, we really do, we pride ourselves on being part of this community, we love Homewood, we could have our business anywhere we want, we choose this place because we love it so much. We have been through all of the building that's happening next to us, we're super excited for all the changes that are happening here in Homewood. And our store just, if you, if you don't know, I, people that did shop here for years, shopped a lot at the Suzy's Hallmark and they retired. So there is no more car shops, so we have kind of expanded the back of our entire store, we added a whole kind of new department there with cars. So if you need a car for any occasion, we are one of the biggest games in town, we have, all of our cars are handcrafted. Nothing is mass produced, nothing is made out of the country, it's all made in the United States by an artisan, so they're really beautiful cars. That's really quick, I'm trying to be quick, anything else, did you think of Angela? No?
You're out.
Oh, ours, okay. We are open Tuesday through Saturday, ten to five, till six on Thursdays. We are open later during the holiday time, and we do have a website, it's Lulubellfinds.com. And you can follow us on our Instagram page or our Facebook page, we feel like Instagram will be better, again, that's at Lulubellfinds.com. And we just, we just like, we love the community, we love all of you guys, and we love, I'm so excited that we've got this person being promoted here today. Very exciting. And we, we just, we're just happy to be here, and we just love, we love our store, we love our community, we love our customers. I'm really quick, during COVID, it was a terrible time, everything shut down, we were able to stay in business because of this community, we were making deliveries on the daily to customers. I mean, twelve, fifteen, twenty people calling in, ordering things, we were dragging over to their homes and waving from afar. So we just, we just feel the love, by, by having a store here, we just feel, we feel the love. That's all it is, I guess, just come see, come see us, and you'll, you'll get, you'll, you'll love it, you'll just love it.
Okay, and do you still have a ten or fifteen percent police discount?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's family, too.
I just thought I'd check.
Well, if you have anything, you're welcome to come in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Chief McGrath, oath of office, Nate Bruni.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Nate Bruni began his career with the Homewood Police Department on April seventh, two thousand and eight. During this term in Homewood, Sergeant Bruni has served as a patrol officer, field training officer, tactical officer, mobile workforce officer, and acting launch commander. Most recently, prior to his promotion, he has been assigned to the Criminal Investigations Unit since two thousand and eighteen as a detective, who is also a member of the Salisbury Major Friends Task Force as a lead homicide investigator. Sergeant Bruni attended Marion Catholic High School and holds a bachelor of science in criminal justice from Illinois State University. Sergeant Bruni's promotion was effective on Sunday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. On a more personal note, I was a patrol officer when I started in two thousand and eight, and I was a field training officer. I absolutely loved working with him over the last sixteen years, and can't wait to continue working with him and seeing what he does for the rest of his career. He is joined tonight by many of his family and friends, as you can see by how filled the room is, with his wife Katie, his daughters Kaylee, Hannah, and Ava, and his parents Mark and Larry.
I state your name.
I, Nate Bruni.
Have you been appointed to?
Have you been appointed to?
The Office of Police Sergeant.
The Office of Police Sergeant.
For the Village of Homewood.
For the Village of Homewood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances of the Village of Homewood.
And even the support ordinances of the Village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as police sergeant.
My duties as police sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That's very nice. Mr. Thomas, the omnibus vote, please.
The board is asked to accept the two thousand and twenty-three annual reports from the Fire and Police Commission and the Economic Development Committee. The board is asked to pass ordinance M. twenty-two eighty-two.
If you would start over, please.
Board is asked to accept the two thousand and twenty-three annual reports from the Fire and Police Commission and the Economic Development Committee. The board is asked to pass ordinance M. twenty-two eighty-two prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply, or potable water supply wells, or other methods, at Royal Road and one hundred and eighty-seventh Street. This relates to the gas station at the intersection of one hundred and eighty-seventh and Halston. Although it is in the village of Glenwood, the village of Homewood would be providing a letter to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency noting that remediation at the gas station site is complete. The board is asked to approve a budget amendment of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars to the Water and Sewer Fund, and accept and approve a proposal from Burns and McDonald of Chicago in that amount for professional engineering services to assist the village as it develops a lead service line replacement plan in accordance with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the Illinois EPA. A federal rule stipulates that lead pipes will be replaced over the next seventeen years. The anticipated cost to Homewood is over thirty million dollars. The village will rely on Burns and McDonald for their engineering services to assist the village in developing its lead service line replacement plan before submission to the EPA. The board is asked to approve resolution R. thirty-one seventy-six, establishing an events committee as an advisory committee to the village board.
Thank you, any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? If not, board comments, trustee Willis, trustee Colton, trustee Hyferman, trustee Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
May I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Hyferman, roll call, please.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
President Hofeld.
Aye. New business, the two, first two items, Mr. Cummings will address.
Good evening, there's two items for you tonight, they're separate items, but they are definitely related since they are connected to the same parcels of property. So this concerns the Brunswick Zone Big Lots building, which has been vacant for several years, and also the Park West Plaza, well called the Great American Bagel Plaza. So, as you know, the village has been working for the last few months, actually more than a year, in terms of establishing a new TIF for the Brunswick Zone Big Lots and the Park West Plaza property. The reason for that is the Brunswick Zone property, the village was able to acquire that in two thousand and twenty-two, prior to that time, it had been privately owned, and then we owed over a million dollars in back taxes, and in addition to that, we had a lot of problems with the building itself. So as soon as Brunswick's, they'll pull out in the middle of the night, and they must replace some shambles, the village started working on that, it was a process. So the ultimate process of setting up a new TIF there, it's going to be called the one eighty-third West TIF. And as you know, there are several multiple steps that the village has to take before you establish a TIF. So there are, you have to do a eligibility study, which has been done, you have to come up with a revote and plan, and you have to have a joint review board meeting, all of those are in place and have been approved. The last step is to have a public hearing, and that's what the purpose of tonight's meeting is, is to open that public hearing. However, it'd be my recommendation not to close that public hearing tonight. The reason for that is, one of the requirements of the TIF Act is, once you close that public hearing, then if you're going to proceed to the TIF, you have to do it within ninety days. The issue is, once the TIF is established, Cook County will go back, and what the law says is, they have to do, they have to use the most recent equalized assessed valuation for the property. So after the village obtained this property back in two thousand and twenty-two, we're talking about Brunswick Zone Big Lots, we filed a petition to tax exempt, so it is now tax exempt for the period of time that we build the Joneses. However, and that's for all of two thousand and twenty-three. The issue is, though, that Cook County has not fully approved the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three estimated or equalized assessed valuation for the entire county. So what that means is, if you went ahead and closed the public hearing tonight, you would have to establish the TIF within three months. We don't think that Cook County is going to have those two thousand and twenty-three numbers done within three months. So the problem is, then we'd be stuck with the two thousand and twenty-two numbers. The two thousand and twenty-two equalized assessed valuation for that property, the property taxes alone were three hundred and some thousand dollars a year on that building. So the end result is, you'd have a TIF with no increment. So the plan for tonight is to open the public hearing and then continue it, prepare the resolution to continue it to June, June twenty-fifth, the second meeting in June. If we don't have the Cook County members by then, my recommendation would be to continue it again. As soon as we do have the Cook County members, the problem will fall from twenty-three, then my recommendation would be to go ahead and establish the TIF at that time. What would happen at that point is that these two parcels, they're currently in a TIF, they're in what they call the Kensi Gateway TIF, which I'll get to in a minute. But the plan at that time would be to remove these two parcels from the Kensi Gateway TIF, establish a new prestanding TIF with that lower EAV from the Brunswick Zone and Big Lots. That would generate, what that means in practical terms is, every dollar in property taxes that would be paid on the Brunswick Zone property could be used to rehabilitate the property. So do it today, and you're looking at the two thousand and twenty-two number, they'll all be built in on that. So you use to develop property, the essential you have. In the meantime, however, the village does, as you heard a few meetings ago, the village does have a developer that's ready to go now. And they've lined up two retailers, and at least one of those retailers has told the village that they need to get in there sooner than later, they want to make sure that they, they have timing issues, they want to get started. So the first item, the alternate bids eleven A on your agenda, actually calls for alternate bid. One of the requirements of the TIF Act as well, is that if you're going to sell property within a TIF, you might have a redevelopment agreement, you'd have to offer a reasonable time for other parties to submit their alternate proposals. So Dave Bossy was here a few weeks ago, and he spoke about Silken Patel coming in, and they're having an establishment come in. There's another one, Ali's Discount, Bargain Discount, whatever, I saw them all over the south when I was coming back from my daughter's flight. But the point is, they want to get in there sooner than later. So the plan would be to solicit alternate bids tonight, have those returnable two weeks from now, and then in the meantime, we could create a redevelopment agreement under the umbrella of the auspices of the existing TIF to sell the property so that the developer could get in and start working. Once the new TIF is established, we would remove these properties from the old TIF, create the new TIF, and do a new redevelopment agreement, and there would actually be some gas in the tank to pay them back and also to rehabilitate the property. That's what's going on. So eleven A would be the solicitation for alternate bids under the Kensi Gateway TIF. That's so we can move the process forward to sell the property to the developer, get it back on the tax rolls now. And then the second motion is eleven B, open the public hearing, and then once accepted any comments from tonight, from anybody who came for the public hearing, then to continue it to June twenty-fifth. Some big cheers, please.
Comments or questions from anyone in the audience at this point? Comments or questions from board members? Trustee Willis?
Sounds like a smart strategy and resonates with a bit of it.
If I could just make sure I understand this, um, so the properties, the, 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 um, Big Lots and the Brunswick Zone are currently in the Kensi TIF?
Correct.
And so any money that they're paying is going into that TIF? But nothing's being paid right now, but like, once the, once the numbers change?
Those properties have not paid anything for years.
Right.
There's been zero property tax income.
Okay, so there's zero in there right now, okay.
Even now, even while the Kensi Gateway TIF was established, they weren't paying a thing. That's one of the ways that the village was able to acquire the Great American Bagel Plaza property, because the property owner hadn't paid the taxes. So the village acquired the Brunswick Zone property because the village filed suit to demolish the property, and we took that in lieu of demolition. So we got that from the property owner, we were able to wipe out that taxes as a result of that. The Great American Bagel property we acquired through the Cook County No Cash Bid program, and that's a program where the county helps municipalities acquire the property, and that doesn't, you know, we're still going to be stuck with the base. There's going to be property taxes coming from that, but the reality is, hopefully, we get a developer for that property as well, and it can start to be serviced again and start paying taxes. But right now, neither of those properties is paying anything, it hasn't for years.
Because when you said, I'm just trying to understand what you meant, when you said there'll be gas in the tank, where will that gas come from?
Once the, establish the new TIF, and we, the village sold it to the developer at that point, they're going to start, they're going to have to start paying taxes.
Oh, so it's coming from the developer?
Correct.
Oh, got you, okay, okay, got you, got you.
That's the property taxes the developer will be paying. The point is, the gas in the tank is, all of those property taxes will be incremented, it goes back into the new TIF.
Cool.
And there'd be a funding source to help rehabilitate the property.
Awesome, no, I just wanted to make sure I understood where that was coming from. And then when they get pulled out of the TIF, the other TIF stays, it's just, they just don't have that property anymore?
Correct.
Cool, okay, good, thank you, this sounds amazing.
Trustee Hyferman?
I have no questions.
Trustee Harris Jones?
No questions, thanks for your explanation, everyone.
Okay, with that being said, may I have a motion to approve ordinance M. twenty-two eighty-three, solicitation of alternate bids?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Willis, seconded by trustee Colton, roll call, please.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
President Hofeld.
Aye.
You solicit open the floor to the public on that.
Will you open the public hearing now?
Yeah.
Okay, with that being said, we are now going to have the public hearing for the proposed one hundred and eighty-third Street West TIF District. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis?
Here.
Trustee Colton?
Here.
Trustee Hyferman?
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Here.
President Hofeld.
Here.
Comments on the, on the proposed TIF?
Is there anybody here to comment?
Anyone, public comments, going once, going twice? Comments from the board? Any further comments?
Nothing further.
No comments.
Okay, now, may I have a motion? Resolution R. thirty-one seventy-seven for the public hearing continuance from today until June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. May I have such a motion?
So moved, second.
Been moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Willis, roll call, please.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
President Hofeld.
Aye. Thank you for your succinct explanation, we appreciate it. Mr. Schaefer, presentation with regard to restriping a Dixie Highway from Park Avenue to one hundred and seventieth Street.
Yeah, tonight is a little two-fold here, but I heard tonight you discussed the Village of Homewood providing a statement of support for restriping Dixie Highway for a three-lane cross-section that includes accommodations for street bicycle path along Dixie Highway roughly from just south of Bellagio's Restaurant to the North Bidoche. The Illinois Department of Transportation multi-year program provides residents and IDOT stakeholders with an improvement plan for Illinois transportation systems within a proposed six-year program. As you're well aware, Homewood has had a major flooding mitigation project that has been assigned to the current year six-year program. Dixie Highway via flooding has always been an issue for years and years. And the reason that flooding is, there's a storm sewer that has, has collapsed, has broken, and IDOT is in the process of doing a phase one project to reconstruct that storm sewer along Dixie Highway. And part of that program is also to look at the transportation along Dixie Highway from the North Bidoche on the west side up to Bellagio's. With that, as you can see on the screen, coming out of the North Bidoche, there'd be a new storm sewer that would run along Dixie Highway up to Bellagio's and then continue on further and go into the, access a larger storm sewer that's here to help drain that, that Bidoche. With that plan, though, it also would be then to restripe the Dixie Highway here from right, basically at the curb, a curb, all the way to the North Bidoche, provide a turn lane down the center, a single lane in each direction, and a bicycle lane on the side of Dixie Highway. This is very similar of what we were talking to do on our eighth third street. But in order to do this and to complete phase one, IDOT is looking for a letter of support to continue with that lane configuration. We have members of IDOT here answering questions. I, as far as my recommendation, I would recommend that we definitely consider this and would show that a letter of support to IDOT. I also feel that this would be a good way to see how that traffic is going to handle. Dixie Highway, as we know, is a very busy road. There have been some questions regarding our road diet along one hundred and eighty-third Street, on whether it is feasible or not, and how that would work. Here's a good way to take a look at that, even though it may be a longer timeframe before it actually gets started and completed, it would be a good way to invent that and see how it works along that stretch of highway. And if it works well, then, you know, we can definitely hopefully move forward with our eighth third street and not have to spend a lot of money, and then if it didn't work, you know, it's, it's, it would be money well spent at that time. Members of IDOT, if you have any questions for IDOT regarding the program and how it works and where we're at, if you're here in the audience and answering a question.
Gentlemen, come on up and tell us a little bit about it. Where have you done this before, has it worked? Come on, tell us some new art.
Thank you, I'm Steve Shulkey, Bureau Chief of Programming, so I've worked on the kind of preliminary engineering of IDOT. So what we did with this job is, we primarily started it as a drainage project, and we didn't want to slow down the drainage project at all, so actually we did get kind of out. We work in three phases, phase one is preliminary engineering, phase two is when we actually put together the contract documents, and phase three is when we actually see the construction. the contract documents, and Phase Three is when you actually see the construction. So we actually got, uh, through Phase One with the drainage and then we kind of took a step back saying, "Well, if we're going to go out there and rip up the road, here's an opportunity to restripe it and put what is, what can, how can we make this better?" Right? Four lane undivided, we do have a lot of off-road, uh, crashes, we look at the crash data. So we came up with this cross section and, and we think it basically extends kind of what, what was kind of started near the bydok. Yeah, I'm here for any questions.
And your timetable for this?
Uh, currently it's in the early years of the program. What you see there is that there's some right-of-way acquisition. So typically Phase Two, uh, takes, land acquisition takes two or three years. So, a, a lot of this is dependent on when we can clear right-of-way. And right-of-way from railroads and railroad coordination is, um, tricky. Uh, you have a lot of railroads in your neighborhood, so, um, uh, so it does take some time working with the railroads and getting all these things worked out. So that is, that is all ongoing right now. Um, and so we're, we kind of didn't want to slow down like, so the drainage project, so, so Phase Two is ongoing. Uh, we're looking to kind of just amend the, put Phase One report, so we're going to do this this year. To make sure that we're, we're still moving forward. So it is early in the program, but yeah, it's about two, three years out. Um, it's all kind of on land acquisition and counterpoint operation. And then, uh, annually we get appropriations from legislators, and then we, you know, that's the annual appropriation, so it's not an annual, uh, yet, um, but yeah, we're still about two, three years out.
So we're talking, we're in 2024, you're talking?
So we were going to six-year cycle to the early years, so yeah, you're looking at 2026, 2027, the earlier years, and it is highly dependent on, uh, cooperation from proprietors and railroads.
The drainage portion? That bydok has flooded for 20 years?
Yes.
When is that going to be done? We've been told next year, next year, next year for years.
Yes, so a lot of that is the, um, I, I will say typically the preliminary engineering phase is the longest phase. So that phase, I think it's just current Phase One was ongoing for, and it was going to be quite a long, it's about six years, so I'd say it was maybe longer. Um, if, the drainage calculations and drainage work was, was a heavy lift for us and it took time to figure out how to drain this, uh, gravity drain, uh, so that did take a lot of time. But yes, this, this now isn't, we got past the drainage, so now, once you kind of see it, it, it's kind of working its way through that long process. So it is starting to move in the right direction, so.
All right, you were, Mr. Schaefer and I were in Schaumburg, when, when was that, John? 2019, 2018? And it was supposed to have been a few years after that, that this was supposed to have been completed?
Yes.
What's happened?
Well, we tend to give you, uh, optimistic schedules. I say the two to three years, but now the next, you know, hurdle is railroad coordination. Um, there always is something that comes up, right? So during preliminary engineering, there's always an environmental issue, there's always some type of issue. Uh, on this one, it was, uh, the, the drainage, um, took, took a little bit more time for me to help. Okay, so, um, that's kind of what happened, unfortunately our, our process. We have a lot of state and federal regulations we have to work through, but getting through Phase One is, is a, is a huge step forward for the project. Usually, once it gets to Phase Two, then, then, now you've got a solid plan and you can move forward. Phase One is where it's still kind of a blank canvas and we're still trying to, uh, do all the calculations that just takes time. And then to work through all the federal and state regulations.
When we were in Schaumburg years back, Mr. Schaefer even pinpointed where the break was in the line, uh, for the, the stormwater. And that's taken probably six, eight years, John, to this point? And it keeps going on and on and on. How many times has the bydok been closed in the last two years because of storms?
Oh, it's probably been at least 30 times.
Can we get a little attention from IDOT to get this done a little bit faster?
Yes, you do have our attention, that is why we didn't want to slow down the drainage project. And that's why we said, put the drainage project out in Phase Two, let us work on the geometry as a whole separate project almost, so now we're overlaying the geometry and coming back later almost. So yes, we are giving you that attention by not slowing down it.
And you're?
Keep, don't, our process is already slow enough, don't slow it.
And you're giving Mr. Schaefer your cell phone number? One other area of concern, that's a T-intersection when you come out of the, the bydok. And we've been asked many times and we've tried to push this past IDOT to get a mirror there, a concave mirror, they have them in Australia, they have them in other locales, and they work fairly well, because when you're going northbound on Park, you can't see under the bydok. When you're making a left turn from under the bydok, you can't see to the north. A mirror would assist in that.
Yes, so I, I, we did get this question previously and we did reach out to our Bureau of Operations, who handles them with this. And so unfortunately, the department does not install or allow these solutions mirrors on state highways. Um, the convex mirror offers a wide view, but they also distort the image, making it difficult to judge distance and speed of approaching vehicles. This could lead to misinterpretation, hesitation by drivers, potentially causing crashes. Uh, improper use, uh, drivers may over-rely on the information provided on the mirror and neglecting to perform proper scanning techniques and relying solely on the front of their images. This can lead to missed cues and increase crashes. Uh, it's also distracting, large convex mirrors can visually distract, throwing, uh, drivers' attentions away from the road, potentially causing them to miss other cues like approaching places and pedestrians. The, the main underlying issue is convex, uh, mirrors also are less effective in low light conditions and can also lead to, uh, driver can be blinded by headlights of other vehicles. Um, and so there is also a concern reliability issue by putting the mirrors. We also abide by the manual, manual uniform front control devices, and this is a very unconventional device that does not also, uh, conform with the federal process.
So in other words, you, you guys will think about it.
It's the greatest government-ease statement I've ever heard. Good Lord.
So I asked the Bureau of Operations, I was like, is, uh, you know, what, what, is there any issues with someone that, uh, that we've got inquiries about? That is one of them that we've gotten and that would be responsible for.
What if we were to put one up over there at our expense? Would you allow that on the right-of-way?
Well, likely no, it would have to either go through permits or what we have seen happen is that it would have to be on like private property and then now you're dealing with railroad property.
No, it's on, it would be on the west side?
Yeah.
Not, not on the railroad side?
So, you'd have to get it outside of the bydok, right? So we have to look at where our right-of-way is and then ask it outside.
Is that possible, John?
Well, we can definitely determine where the right-of-way is. The question would be is?
Again, you know, all of the things that you had brought up about distorted images and so forth, right now people are flying blind, you can't see, you cannot see, so they're just creeping out there. It's more dangerous doing it this way than it would, if you had a mirror, it'd give you some visibility.
Yeah, certainly driving through that, that area, and I certainly don't drive it as much as everyone, right? Um, you know, there, there are some things that are, they're, people tend to be going at high speeds. Um, one of the things that you see in the cross section there is, you know, further narrowing the lanes, further reducing the lanes to slow people down. Uh, people are going fairly fast through here, um, and so that is one of the benefits of the, the road diet through here is to, to, to try and narrow that so that people aren't seeing this four lane cross section and hauling as, as fast as they can, because they know as soon as they get a right-of, they just haul. Um, and so that is some of the, uh, advantages that we have with the, the road diet section. And so that's, that's, it is, it is, it is tough through that bydok. I will, I will review that, um, that, uh, seeing people go through that.
One of the things, uh, as, as traffic is going southbound, we have the kindest sign in the world. It says, "When signaling, please, when proceeding left, please signal." It doesn't say, "Turn your signal on." Uh, I don't know if you have any other type of signalization, anything like that, to alert people to, to signal their turns when they go left? Because the cars that are trying to go northbound, they don't know if the cars are going to go straight, if they're going to make a turn, i- it's really a difficult intersection.
It is, um, and I can certainly, uh, go back to operations of all, I guess a couple of things. When this gets done, when this will get done, early in the program, um, hopefully, you know, it will be more striping, uh, we will, you know, fresh striping out there. Um, I can, I can have operations see if there's anything that can be done. And from as far as just making sure the signage and everything out there is, is appropriate. But yeah, it just seems like a hill going down, a hill going up, I don't know.
Stand out there rush hour sometime and, and just watch.
Yeah.
That's, 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 John, as long as we have IDOT here, is there anything else we need?
Fine, since we do have mirrors, they could address a little bit of the pavement issue at the bydok until, uh, the operations.
Yeah, now instead of a few years, there, there, there's a lot of chuck holes there.
Yeah, so we, we did, I, I did put in a request to maintenance, look at that, that would be our maintenance yards, I can, that we can patch that. Uh, we do, we don't have anything coming up in the program close. Uh, but yeah, uh, we, we can reach out to our maintenance yards and take a look at what we can do in the term, but it'll be patched until we can get up there and do this. Because, uh, and sorcerers could be, what's 20 feet deep, I think, so it will be a pretty big, uh, it'll be a jack-in the sack, a lot of that road will be replaced and resurfaced, so. The other good thing is to mention with the right-of, the EPA, so all of those corner areas, as you can see on there. So a lot of this isn't accessible, sorcerers hold routes, especially on the other side, it's accessible.
Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Could you do a loop there, or does that not work? Of course not, that would stop it.
Of course, I mean, it's probably more government answers. Um, we, we follow the manually input control devices, right? So we would have to look at, does the signal need warrants at this location? And I'm sure we, we look at that, we have double back track. So, it's a big book, we actually just came up with one, uh, not many, that's like, we're just excited. Uh, but it's a huge book and we have all these warrants and asking for a vehicle per hour, all these warrants. If it warrants, then yes, it's a warrant, it's, if it doesn't warrant, then you can't, so that's just the national standard. Um, so I have double back, it's a, it's a little question, I have the double back, but, uh, trying to see if we have actually some warrants.
Very good point, that would be good if you were to look at it like that. Fellow with the beard, did you have a question? That's our Assistant Director of Public Works, I had to put him on the spot. Ms. Boyden?
How many accidents have there been at that intersection?
I don't know, it's tough in there. Well, the Phase One city moved at the corridor and it was, for the half-mile corridor, it was 15 or 18, I think it's a little past five years, yeah, over the, so about 10 to 20. Unfortunately, it's, uh, we have reservations, so a lot, of course, um, so.
Well, I traveled through there at least four times a day and I've never seen an accident. That's why I'm wondering.
That's good, okay, that's good, yeah, usually I, oh, there's always a place that.
Right, I must have walked five times.
Board comments?
Nothing currently.
Trustee Col?
Um, I just want to say, I'm happy about the road diet, I think that's going to be good. Um, I especially, I particularly like the bike lanes, because that is a, I'm a cyclist, that's a very dangerous area. But I just want to be clear that I fully agree with and echo everything President Hofeld said, that, that we need, we need this to move quickly.
Can you give me, John, like an overall from the, this side of the bydok, going around the curb? How much, um, what are the future plans for the by, what are the future needs for the bydok itself? And is that being addressed separately, or is that some way in the future thing?
Well, just so you understand, the, the bydok is not owned by IDOT. The bydok, the road underneath it is, but the bydok itself is not. Half of it is owned by Canadian National Railroad, and the other half is owned by, uh, Metro.
And what are the issues with that itself?
Structurally, the bydok gets inspected by both Metro and Canadian National. And is it in, it is in, I'll call it sound condition, means that it'll hold freight, you know, it's serving its purpose. Cosmetically, it doesn't look the greatest, but as far as structurally sound, uh.
But, okay, that part of it, yeah, leaks and everything, but, okay, so that really isn't our current issue. The road, however, from this side of the bydok, are we talking about that, the road itself going under the bydok? Would it be part of this, or does it end?
No, yes, part of it, as, sorry, as part of the drainage project, we are going to be putting a random pipe through here, so the majority of the road will be drainage water. So yes, that's kind of part of this, and that, that's why when we looked at, and then the pipe goes north, uh, and so then that's what gave us the opportunity to say, okay, well, it's, uh, with the drainage project, we'll have geometrics, this works, or geometric section, uh, look at what can, how can we make this road better?
So once this is completed, um, John, the, um, the aesthetics of above ground are, it's not the big concern. We're, we're not waiting for anything specifically for that?
No, we're trying to address the flooding issue and that's the main thing to make of the.
Because this has come up many times over the course of my terms here. Um, and I just want to make sure that I'm getting a full picture of it, and so this is the explanation of the whole thing, so. Yeah, and just for what it's worth, today I was going northbound on Park and crossing over, and I was so frustrated because I could not tell, you know, what was happening at that point, but then also just the raw surface of, of, every vehicle is bouncing as it's going through. I can't imagine that there isn't an asphalt truck out there tomorrow to fix it, because it's, it's just wrong that we have to put up with that, so.
And Mr. Schaefer gets his cell phone, the truck may be there tomorrow. One other thing, in conjunction with the, uh, the roadway underneath the bydok, please pay attention to the sidewalk there as well. Uh, the sidewalk can use some love. I'm sorry, did you, Trustee Harris Jones?
I have a question, will there be any lighting on the bydok? You know how cars go under, will there be any lighting so that they can see better at night or anything like that?
There is lighting currently, I think, there now.
There is, is it LED or what is it?
Uh, I don't know if those are converted over LED or not, I'd have to check. We've converted most of our lighting to LED.
Okay.
You're on, right?
Yeah, we, okay.
Yeah, so it's some work.
Mr. Schaefer, any other questions, as long as we have this gentleman?
No, I have none.
Any further comments from IDOT? He handled himself well, did he? I never knew there were so many bureaus within IDOT. Good Lord, my bureaucracy at its best. Okay, thank you, I appreciate you all being here tonight. With that, may I have a motion to, uh, transmit a letter to the, uh, Illinois Department of Transportation in support of this Dixie Highway project?
Second.
Been moved by Trustee Hyferman, seconded by Trustee Colton, roll call please.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
President Hofeld?
Aye. The motion is approved, general board discussion, Trustee Willis?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Colton?
Nothing tonight.
Trustee Hyferman?
Nothing tonight.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Nothing for me.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Soon, second.
Been moved by Trustee Colton, seconded by Trustee Harris Jones, roll call please.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Yes.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
President Hofeld?
Aye, we stand adjourned, thank you all.